Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, October 29th, 2019, and it's a beautiful sunset outside. The glow is wonderful. Let the record show that Kathy Martin-Willis is on it with us on the phone. Hi Kathy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that she's there. Please have the record show that Counselor Morton is excused. Counselor Hicks is also excused tonight. Council members, you have the minutes of October 8th in front of you. Do they meet with your approval?
I have one change, Mayor.
Please.
I believe it's at the end of paragraph five or section five. The last sentence didn't really capture-
Which page, please?
I'm sorry?
Which page?
I think it's the end of, oh, thank you Karen. End of section five, which is on page five. Is that right?
Four or five, yeah.
Yeah. The last sentence didn't really capture my intent. What I meant to say was, and I've already coordinated this with Karen, but regarding the Polk Street properties, the resolution stated that the revenue would go toward museum property purchase and with no potential sale, I noted there would be no offsetting monies. Just want to make that change.
Thank you. You have that Karen?
Yes.
Would somebody like to move the minutes as amended?
I move to, so moved.
So moved. And I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kathy? Are you there Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to, it'll take us a little bit to get this, but we'll get there. Visitor comment. I have some for when we get a little bit later in the other public hearing. Are there other visitor comments at this time? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to continue us forward. Under Mayor comments, I just want to let folks know, I had the opportunity to attend the Complete Count Committee as we're working on the census to make sure that we get everybody counted. This is a coordinated effort with our sister city Monmouth. And so, moving steadily forward, we had a representative of the census, and there are lots of jobs available, by the way. If anybody's looking for employment, there are lots of census jobs around the United States, and they pay really well, and they work at, there's lots of flexibility. Also, I had the opportunity to speak at the opening of the new hotel. It was a wonderful turnout. It was one of the most beautiful days, I think, that could ever be. It was 62 degrees, sunny, and the colors of the leaves, the greens, the oranges, and the yellows along the river were just gorgeous, and it was just wonderful. And I want to tell you, people came from all over, and lots of accolades to our community. So I just wanted to pass that on. We have some Counselor Liaison reports, and so Counselor Takeus, I think you have a couple of them.
Yes, I do. So I'll start with the traffic safety report. Actually, a couple of meetings ago, there was some complaints about large trailers being parked on the street, and you know, the safety issues that causes, and the parking issues that causes. And we had a discussion about that, and I believe that's since morphed into maybe a greater discussion about parking. And so, I think that we will be hearing more about that in the future, but that's just kind of in the works. The other thing we talked about, we're getting some complaints around the area of Chestnut, near some of the new construction. Ninth and Chestnut, was that the intersection there? Eighth. Eighth, yeah. And so, we're going to be doing some data collection down there to see what the problem really is, and see if there's something we can do about that. My other report, Historic Preservation Commission, we did not have a meeting this last month.
Thank you. Counselor Corr for Independence Days.
Independence Days Commission met on the 17th. We talked about a myriad of issues. All are in various stages of finalization, so I'm going to save most of them for when they're final. One thing we did talk about was the possibility of hosting a volunteer recruitment fair, and this would be larger than just Independence Days Commission. It would involve all the commissions and boards, any community organization that needs volunteers, city as well. I'm going to be the lead on that effort. We would like to use the event center as the venue for that, if possible. But I'll get more information to the city as that gets finalized.
Great.
And we also did appoint a PR and social media person, which is a big move for the Indy Days Commission.
Thank you. Appreciate it that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I have to write. Thank you. Okay. Mr. City Manager, I think it's your turn.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and Counselors. Tagging on to what Counselor Corr was just talking about, we are looking to have a volunteer dessert in December. I think I've mentioned that before, but we've kind of started to formally start picking out some days. We're kind of looking at Thursdays, maybe six-thirty or later. We know that not everybody will be able to make it, but certainly we want to appreciate the current volunteers that we have, and we can use that as a springboard to kick off your event as well. So, I really don't have a whole lot tonight, but I do want to talk about a few things. I did get a question through our open Indy portal that we have to have, receive complaints and also questions to city about recycling and the decrease in service that we've seen from brands. I mentioned this a number of months ago, but recycling is becoming a very large problem throughout the country with the inability to ship products to China, or even internally, products that used to be viable like glass and plastics and other things just have absolutely no market value. So it's become a really big problem. I think we're probably coming up on nine years since we did our last franchise agreement with brands, and I think we're probably going to be looking at some sort of conversation there to not only pick up the recycling conversation, but other pieces as well regarding utilities. So I just wanted to let you know, it's on my radar. Those franchise agreements can be a lot of work and hand-stuff, but I think it's time we probably looked at that and figured out how we want to approach that. Because right now, our franchise agreement just calls out recycling material and doesn't define it in any significant way. So there really isn't anything that we have in the agreement that would help us to say what level of service we want. And I think that's important to them and to us. Important to them because they need to know if we have a particular level of service that we are expecting in that area, then what is the cost of that going to be for us, so that we make sure that we're still doing what we want for the community. So a lot more to follow on that, is what I'm trying to say. It was a great question, and I appreciate getting it. So, we had on, came to the city really kind of through Facebook this weekend, some reports that some customers had gotten utility bills with a zero-dollar balance on them. And we went through and kind of took a look at what happened, and it was really kind of quick for us to figure out what happened, and then also come up with some solutions. But essentially, the report got ran from, we usually run it for one week, so there's usually about 10 to 20 roughly utility customers that get what's called their final bill. And a final bill is someone who's usually moving out, so it's kind of that bill, okay, we've transferred service from one person to another, so it's not going to necessarily be the full month, it's going to be a part of a month. And so, we generate a report which sends that final bill to the person so that they can transfer on. But for whatever reason, the report got run for an entire year. And so, if anybody has received a final bill during that period and had paid it, got another bill that showed that it had a zero balance. So the solution to that is actually pretty straightforward. So whenever we run that report from now on, we run a summary report with it as well, so someone can go in and see, okay, well, there should be 14 of these, there's 300 of them, how come there's that many, and how come 294 of them have a zero balance on them? We didn't have the capability and the finance software that we had, so the person that was running the report was kind of running a little bit blind. We also relied on the service that we sent it to to double-check it, and they also didn't have a report to double-check it again. So we've actually created two internal reports to make sure that that doesn't happen again in the future. And then finally, just want to let you know that the Polk County Warming Center is set to open up today. It's going to be located at the Monmouth Christian Church. I think you all know that that rotates throughout the county, and based on the days, it's their turn. There's a low of 24 degrees expected for tonight, according to my notes. I haven't checked that, but that sounds pretty cold. Intake is from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. The warming center operates from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and transportation can be arranged if it's absolutely necessary.
Where was that located again?
It's Monmouth Christian Church.
Thank you.
And with that, I don't have anything else, but I-
I had a question about the warming center.
Yes.
Because I saw the discussion on Facebook, and somebody brought up the question, so how do people who need that find out about it? You know, because they may not have the resources to find out about it. Is there a way we can advertise that?
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly, you know, word of mouth, but Polk County, you know, puts it out on their social media. I don't know if we got it on our social media today, but typically, we try to do that.
It was on ours.
We also put up flyers in our office. You know, we could certainly put something up on the library.
It is on the reader board of the library.
So there are definitely things that we do, and everybody does, but you know, when you get down to somebody who doesn't have Facebook, or doesn't have, you know, regular access, they have a pretty good network to communicate to each other as well, so.
Additional questions for the City Manager? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving forward. Mr. Evander, I think you have the next one. Amending the Independence Development Code, Subchapter 74.
Yeah. So this ordinance that's before you is the ordinance for the public hearing that you folks had at your last meeting about the height of accessory structures associated with a single-story, single-family residence. You remember, currently, we base the height of accessory structures on the height of the primary residence. That doesn't work for people who have particularly short houses, and we have an individual that's trying to build an accessory structure a little bit taller than their primary residence. This ordinance would make that change official.
Are there questions for the presenter? As you recall, we discussed this last time. Is everybody okay? Kathy, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you.
Just make one comment. We did have a public hearing on this at the last meeting, so that requirement has been met.
Thank you. This is an action item.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2019-03, amending the Development Code, Subchapter 74.005.B, in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance amending Subchapter 74.005, Paragraph B, accessory structures of the Independence Development Code.
Okay. Someone will do the second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2019-03, amending Development Code, Subchapter 74 dot 005 dot B, for the second time by title only.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Counselor Corr. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance amending Subchapter 74.005, Sub B, accessory structures of the Independence Development Code.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2019-03.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. I think everybody's all okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The last pastor will be assigning ordinance number 1572.
Okay. I'm going to go, museum property purchase, I think, Mr. Pesamir, I think you get to carry the ball tonight.
Yes, since we moved the meeting, our finance director, Gloria, which cannot be here, so I'm going to cover this for her. But I think at this point, it should be fairly straightforward. We've talked about this a number of times, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because we had a pretty healthy discussion at our last meeting related to the property purchase. So what you have before you is kind of what we talked about as the additional stuff the council would have to do, and that one of those is to bring forward a resolution regarding the purchase of 281 South Second Street in Independence for the uses of museum. That includes a property purchase as well as improvements that we expect will be needed in order to get it up and operating. Certainly not the entire amount that will be needed. We're looking for grants and for other funding sources to help out, and hopefully prevent us from having to take this whole loan out, as well as do other things that can't be done. So just a quick background, in July, the museum board and staff identified the property sale at 281 South Second Street to be a good opportunity for the museum to move closer into downtown and house museum. At the August 27th council meeting, I reported the findings that were identified for this property, and that it was the best option for the meeting. We also noted that we would need to seek financing for the purchase improvements. And during the October 8th meeting, the council approved the purchase of 281 South Second Street as authorized by the city manager. So essentially, from that point on, I have been working on the documents with the seller. We had certain times that were outlined in our agreement. They are very, very anxious to close by the end of this month, so we really have a couple of days to get this filed up, so we're kind of at the very end of our timeline here. You know, the fiscal impacts of this resolution that we're putting forward is basically to allow us to borrow up to $650,000, which, as I mentioned before, would be the purchase of the property, as well as the improvements that we needed. But certainly, if we can do it for less than that, we would, and especially if we can get some grants or some other things to offset that, we would use those first. We looked at a couple of different options for loan packages. As you can see, this would be a full faith and credit obligation. We looked at ways to maybe split this up into purchasing the property, and then having a separate loan package for some of the other stuff, so we could keep the money separate. The problem is, as a municipal agency, the costs for us to even initiate any loan are fairly significant. So any savings that we might have obtained through interest rates wouldn't have been there. We also looked at trying to do a construction-type loan, but the interest rates would be significantly higher, and again, that really doesn't make any sense. And, you know, $650,000 is a lot of money, but for banks loaning to a municipal organization, that's on the low side for them. So going under that and trying to split it into two would be something that would be, would not be to our advantage in any way, shape, or form. We think we'd get the best rate being at this amount, or at least that's what the obligation is. So just a couple of other items. We, I think Lori mentioned that she thinks that the interest rate's going to be around 2.5%. Interest rates are very, very low at this point in time, so we get an advantage there. We probably, just to put it out there, we're looking at probably around $75,000 a year initially, if we take out the whole hundred, $650,000. Just to put that perspective, that is about 0.8% of our general fund budget, so less than 1% of the general fund budget total. But we expect that to come down, and any loan offer, any loan that we take out, we certainly have a provision that would allow us to pay that down without a penalty. And so, we, you know, that number's probably going to drop down to $50,000, which is less than half of 1% of our general fund revenue for the year. So with that, we are recommending that you adopt Resolution 19-1516 as presented, which would allow us to finish this project and get the museum moving forward.
Questions for the presenter?
Yeah. So just a process question. I've been, I'm not okay with spending this amount of money. I understand that you would like to close before the first. A matter of process, because we have fellow counselors missing. Do you need my vote tonight? Because I would like to be a no. But if you need a courtesy to move forward, I will be willing to grant that in the best interest of staff.
I, we have-
How does, I don't know how that works.
I understand. What we do have Counselor Martin-Willis on the phone.
Okay.
And so, yes, you can vote your choice.
Thank you.
And I, any additional questions?
Three ayes are able to carry the vote?
No, but there is the charter provision.
You want to explain what? We were prepared for this.
Okay.
The Independent City Charter requires that four votes determine a question. The, in certain cases where there is not enough of the mayor to vote enabling him to break a tie, he can declare the absent people what's called negative by absence. So if there were three negative votes and three positive votes, there would then be a tie vote.
Gotcha. That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay? Thank you. If there are no additional questions, this is an action item, and I would love to have an action proposed.
I move to adopt Resolution 19-1516, authorizing a full faith and credit borrowing for the purchase and improvements of 281 South Second Street, Independence, Oregon.
I have a motion.
Correct.
I have a second. Second by Counselor Martin-Willis. Is there further discussion? I hear no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I have Counselor Corr, Counselor Takeus, Counselor Martin-Willis, and nos.
Counselor Ranstromson.
Okay. And I am declaring that Counselor Hicks and Counselor Morton are nos by absence, which makes it a tie vote, and I vote yes. Passes four to three. Thank you very much.
I hope Counselor Morton was aware that was happening, because I know that this has been a very important-
Right. And it is recorded in the record as a no by absence. Just, that's just how the charter works. Okay. We're good. Let's keep moving forward. Mr. Evander, you have the next item, and while you're walking up, I have a script, a quasi-judicial land use hearing script for the City of Independence. I will now open a public hearing on the annexation of property and designation of zoning file AX 2019-01. I'm John McCarthy, and I'm the mayor, and I'm chairing this hearing. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the Independence Development Code and state law, ORS 197.763, specifically, the staff shall first present the staff report and recommendations. The applicant will then have an opportunity to present the proposal and address any issues by the staff report and recommendation. For public testimony, I will first ask to hear from people who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. I will then ask to hear from people who have neutral comments or questions about the proposer. That means neither positive or negative, it really has to be neutral. And finally, those in opposition to the proposal will have an opportunity to present testimony, starting with the appellant's. City staff will then present additional material and recommendations based on public testimony. The applicant will be given the opportunity to have the last word. After each presentation, I will ask for questions from the council. If you intend to present oral testimony, please fill out a request to speak form located with Karen over there, and give it to city staff. We are recording this hearing, so please also state your name and address when you're called to speak, so help in preparing accurate written minutes of the hearing, and also assist with mailing copies of the decision to all interested parties. If you have written testimony or other evidence to present, please give that to staff so it can be entered into the record. Given that there are, how many people are here to testify in this tonight? One, two? Okay. I ask, so I can know how to manage time, is what I'm trying to do. Given the people that are here to speak, I ask that each person limit themselves to between three and four minutes, please. Please remember that all presentations will be timed. You'll be informed when your time is expired, and all speakers exceeding the time will be asked to immediately conclude their remarks. If you don't finish your presentation, be sure to provide a copy of your statement to staff. The applicant will not be limited to three minutes, but they are encouraged to limit their presentation as to be respectful of other, of the time constraints this evening. In order to minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group, and other members of the organization stand to show their support. Each person may testify only once unless called back to the podium at the request of the council to respond to a question. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, conflicts of interest. The mayor and council is required to disclose any conflicts of interest and ex parte contacts that we have had with the proposer or the applicant, that is, whether we have any financial or other personal interest in the property, in the proposal, whether we have spoken with anybody about the proposal outside of this hearing. Also, counselors may only participate if they can do so without undue bias, either for or against the applications. Do any counselors or myself wish to make any disclosures? Anybody have any disclosures to make? Counselor Martin-Willis, do you have any disclosures to make? Counselor Willis? Are you there?
Yes, I am.
No disclosures?
No ex parte contact.
Thank you. Are there any challenges from the audience as to conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or biases related to any member of the council? I don't see anybody jumping up and down. State law requires me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of the hearing. First, the applicant, the applicable criteria that apply to this application are contained in the written staff report and will be identified and discussed in the oral staff report. Second, your testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to this hearing. That's in ORS 197.763-5B. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on this application based on that issue, ORS 197.763-5C. Finally, to the applicant, failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of the approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in certain court, in Circuit Court, ORS 197.7963B. Okay.
That's a lot of it.
Staff can begin. Please make your presentation.
Perfect. Hi there. My name is Fred Evander. I'm here to present on the annexation of 70.2 acres in the southwest portion of the City of Independence. It's under Project File AX 2019-01. So I do have a staff report for you. It is attached in your packet, and I'm not going to go through that page by page, just for interest of, to keep it interesting. I did prepare a PowerPoint. Karen, can you pull that up? So this is the property that we're talking about. You can see, I'm not, I'm going to try and avoid you, Counselor Takeus. So you can see, it is this seven-shaped property in the southwest portion of the Independence Urban Growth Boundary, and you can see right there, it's a property in relation to Central Plaza and Central High School. Now, this project has been a long time coming. The annexation of this land has been a long time coming. A lot of times when we hear of development, and individuals hear about a project, they think that perhaps we're just dropping this on them. In reality, there's been a whole lot of things that has gone into this, and there will be a number of things that still have to go into this to actually see development. Back in 2007, the city, oh, 2007 or 2009, the city identified the need for additional developable land. They went out, and did a housing needs assessment, it did a buildable lands analysis, and it determined, based on the population that was anticipated for the next 20 years, till 2029, it was done in 2009, that 259 additional residential acres were needed to accommodate the population growth of the City of Independence. It identified that as part of that. It amended the Comprehensive Plan. It included the land in the urban growth boundary. And this, once the land is in the urban growth boundary, then we can actually annex it. So there's a whole bunch of pre-work that goes into a project before you can even annex it. Once the annexation occurs also, there's a whole bunch of things that have to be done before you're actually going to see a house on the site. Once annexation happens, we'll likely see a sub- Once annexation happens, we'll likely see a subdivision approval. I can guarantee you that we will not see a subdivision that comes in all 70 acres at one time. I imagine that there will be a number of phases to future subdivisions of the site. Currently, the applicant has talked about two initial phases to potentially have 100 homes, but that will not... That will... The entire development of that will be metered in over time. Those subdivision applications and approval also require public hearings before the planning commission, so there will be additional public hearings on development of this site. Now, I bring that up partially because as we get further and further into this, additional detail is provided at each of these phases. So when we talk about things like traffic, when we talk about things like actually... Say, actual detailed impacts to things like wetlands or stormwater design or stuff like that, that gets further and further as we get into the project. I will say that the applicant has submitted a traffic impact analysis for the first two phases, the first 100 homes. They also have submitted state-reviewed and approved wetland delineations for the site. So that work has been done, but again, that will get more detailed and more refined as the site gets closer and closer to development. Now, sort of the history of this site here, it was brought into the urban growth boundary in 2009, as I said. A buildable lands inventory was done, a housing needs analysis was done, and that analysis didn't just look out at the southwest area and say, "Where do we want that land?" It actually identified a whole bunch of properties around the city and identified the preferred area for development, and it was the southwest area. It identified the southwest area as a preferred area for growth and brought the land into the urban growth boundary. After that, special planning was also conducted for the site. In 2012, the city developed the Southwest Independence Concept Plan. It articulated the future zoning for the site, the anticipated zoning for the site, the preferred zoning for the site, mixed-density residential strategies to promote a mix of housing types, roads, pedestrian facilities, all that stuff. So this is the southwest area plan and sort of some of the visions that you see in the plan, and you can see this is the site right there, just to picture it within that southwest area plan. So looking at this, you can see as we're... You can see some of the key principles of the plan. Some of the things that it talked about were road connections and connecting this area very well to the rest of the community. Other things that it talked about, this red right here is areas of higher-density housing. One of the concepts that the MX zone talks about is mixing densities on the site. It didn't want to just bring in the land and then say, "All right, all single-family dwellings out there." It wanted to have a mix of housing types. So that's also illustrated here. Another thing that you can see is it had the concept of open space... Of an open-space network primarily centered around the south fork of Ash Creek. So that's sort of the concept in general. You can see some of the things here. I'll just point this out, the blue is collector's streets in this plan from 2012. The red is an arterial street, which... And green is a local street. And I should describe what each of those streets mean. Arterials are the bigger streets, they handle more volume, they provide less access to the individual land uses nearby. They're designed primarily to move traffic. The collector's streets are sort of the medium-sized road, and then the local streets are more local. Now, there is one thing that I think we've sort of realized as we've looked at this. This plan shows three bridges across the south fork of Ash Creek, and it... I mean, building bridges is not exactly the easiest thing in the world, so we think it's probably more realistic that we'll have two bridges in the future, one probably at this chestnut right here, which the city has done additional... Or has done some preliminary design on, and then this one down here. So... So anyways, having said that, that southwest area plan from 2012, this proposal, as it's submitted, fits that pretty well. Now, I'm going to call into attention... To your attention, this is facing north. There's the north arrow right there, so here's the seven, right? So you can see there's a seven, it's just flipped on its side. You can see it's starting to create that road network that was envisioned right here. It's trying to... Or it's achieving some of the park and open space concepts that it had, that that plan envisioned, all of that sort of stuff. From my perspective, the annexation proposal, this master plan, fits very well, the southwest area concept plan. There are some things that it does not completely address. Those are primarily related to street connectivity. If you look at this diagram right here, you can see this shows multiple connections across Talmage with this neighborhood here. Also, the plan talks about connecting across sites, so connecting to the north and connecting to the south. That is something that the proposal doesn't quite achieve right here, but it's something that we can address at the subdivision stage of the application, just better connecting that in. Now, one of the questions you might have is, why would we want to connect it better in? Well, when we connect streets well, it distributes traffic throughout the network rather than focusing it in one spot, which is what the southwest area plan wanted, and it's something that ultimately we think makes a whole lot of... I mean, it makes a whole lot of sense from a number of different perspectives. So basically, what... Having said all that, basically what you are being asked to consider right now is two separate actions. One is to actually zone the site. It's not zoned right now. It was identified as being... As it should be, the MX zone. That's what we're proposing it is. So... And then the second thing that you're actually being asked to do tonight is annex the property. Now, your approval criteria for annexing the property are shown on pages eight and nine of my staff report, and I don't know what number that is of your council packet. Basically, what you're being asked to consider is if this master plan fits within the concept of that southwest area plan. The first thing, it says, "The master plan is generally consistent with the locations and amounts of low, medium, and density... And high-density residential development." I would say, based on this plan, which calls for some higher-density development near 13th, and spread some smaller lots toward 16th, and then some standard, single-family residences toward the south of the site, it meets that... It meets that criteria. It achieves a maximum... A minimum target density of nine units per acre, which the southwest area plan talks about. It demonstrates that 15% of the housing units are going to be something other than single-family residences. And then it is very consistent with the concept plan policies in Section 3 of the document. And I won't go through all of those. So those are basically the criteria that you are being asked to evaluate this proposal based on. From my perspective, I would say, yes, it absolutely meets those criteria. Based on that, I would recommend that you folks approve of the proposal as submitted with a couple of conditions. You'll note the conditions in my staff report. One is just that that additional street connectivity is provided from the site. That's something that the plan envisioned, and it's something that we really support, to distribute that traffic better throughout the network. And the second thing is just the condition and the recognition that as they get further into the development of the site, they will need to comply with municipal code standards and development code standards, engineering standards, as they're preparing their materials. So are there any questions based on that?
I have... I'd like a clarification. In your staff report, the suggested motion, it seems like we're directing staff to prepare an ordinance for annexation, not approving annexation tonight. Is that correct?
Right, that's exactly right.
So we're not actually approving the annexation? We're directing an ordinance, and then we would go to approving it at a later date?
Correct, Karen?
Well, you are approving the annexation and directing that the legislation be prepared to finalize that approval.
Okay.
Sort of similar.
I guess I'm just saying, so we don't have the exact language. Are we approving it or not?
Actually, the suggested motion comes about adopt of findings and conditions of approval is submitted and direct staff to prepare an ordinance declaring the property annexed to the City of Independence. So this is when we make the decision, and then the paperwork follows.
Yeah. So we won't vote again to actually annex? We won't vote again for that ordinance?
You will vote for the ordinance at a future meeting.
Okay, so that...
Because we don't have any ordinance prepared.
Okay, so we're saying we want to annex it. The language will figure out later, and we'll have to approve the language, but we're... Okay, thank you. That's what I need to know, yes.
Thank you.
Questions, please, Judge Corr.
Fred, can you address some of the letters that we received, not all of which were in our council packet? There was one from the Fair Housing Council, which brought up an issue related to statewide planning goals.
Yes, that's great. Thank you very much for the question. So we received three letters related to this. The one from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, I did prepare a response for you, and I left it on there. It's a two-page response. Basically, the essence of the response is this. They were asking how we meet their... The state goaltend requirements related to housing needs. And basically, the answer is really simple. We originally conducted the housing needs analysis. That housing needs analysis identified that we wanted about 30% of our future development to be multifamily structures. It identified the fact that we needed 259 acres of additional land. That housing needs analysis did that. And based on that, we brought inland, and we put it sort of set aside as the MX zone, which sort of... Which requires 15% of the housing units at least to be multifamily housing. And the reason that we did that was that we anticipated that that zone would help us get to that goal of addressing that housing need. So we did that. We actually have a requirement that says 15% of the housing has to be something other than single-family dwellings. We've been consistent throughout the entire planning process since that 2009. So... So really, we've addressed the issue in the past. We identified it in the past as appropriate for MX zone, and I think perhaps that they're confused that... Because the way it's worded, it sort of sounds like we're doing a rezone. Well, sure, we're doing a rezone, but the fact of the matter is, we identified it as appropriate for MX zone a long time ago. The reason that we did that was because we saw the housing need out there that we wanted to address.
Thank you. I appreciate the background on all this, especially since a lot of this happened before some of us were on council. One question on page five of your report, it says, "No planning commission review is required for an annexation/rezone." Why is that?
Why is that? I'm not certain. It says it specifically in Chapter 11 of the Independence Development Code. It specifically calls that out.
Mr. Passamere?
Yeah, and I'll add to that. I mean, a lot of cities in Oregon don't have their planning commission look at these. These are typically more of a legislative type of issue. Our code is set up so it looks... And it feels much more like a land use action, but both cities consider this to be a legislative-type action because it's really just a decision. Do they meet the criteria generally, and are we bringing in? Because the land use decisions are on either side of this process, as Fred kind of explained before. A lot of cities don't even have nearly the amount of code criteria that we do to talk about annexations. Matter of fact, a lot of cities are just moot on it, and they follow what's in the state code, which is very, very minimal. So you actually have a lot more tools here and a lot more analysis that would have gone into it than other places in the state.
Okay. Two more questions.
Yeah.
Do you have any indication about the affordability of the homes going into this area? I know we've talked in the city conversations about making sure we have mid-range and low-income covered.
That... No, I don't.
And the last question I have, the applicant, who is Valpak Development, identified the wetlands in the traffic studies? That seems a bit of a conflict of interest to me. Do you go back and look at what they've provided and verify?
Yes. So right now, we took... We took the traffic impact analysis. I've looked at it. I'd say it's very well done. We are going to look at that specifically as they're going into a subdivision approval, and for instance, with our last subdivision, we actually had that traffic impact analysis peer-reviewed by somebody that we selected. The wetlands analysis itself was approved by the state. So the state went out there, they looked at everything, and they actually approved it.
And one last question, just a target of opportunity, because the superintendent and the fire chief are here. Are they involved in these kinds of conversations when we talk about growth?
I mean...
Well, they certainly were when the urban growth boundary project was going on. As far as, you know, particular annexations, I'm not sure who all got copies of this. I know that we try to reach out to other partners, but they're certainly welcome to provide comments if they do have questions or concerns.
If I might add, I know that... I know that I personally talked to the superintendent at the time and let them know that with the southwest... Southwest annexation, that's what we were doing, bringing in 250-some acres, and let them know that. What they did with that, I do not know. But I know I particularly brought that up to buzz on several occasions.
Yeah. One thing I'll mention too is, you know, this is the annexation, and we talked about subdivision, but if you kind of walk back in time to like 2006, you know, there were some properties in some areas that got annexed, and then, you know, the housing market just completely fell apart. So it wasn't until, you know, probably almost seven, eight, 10 years later, before you actually started seeing those subdivision applications come in. And certainly, wetlands can change, and the background traffic can change, and some other things can change. So that's one of the reasons those more detailed reports actually come out during that time, and it's also then an opportunity for others to comment and make value conversations or add to the conversation. So you never know in the annex, how... What that timing is going to be. Obviously, what we're looking at now, as you probably see, as Fred mentioned, is steady progression of this coming in, but certainly there are outside factors that can change that significantly, and that's why we don't get too much down into the weeds with the actual documents, because, you know, a wetland report's actually only good for two years. So, you know.
Good to know, thank you.
And I understand having the conversation in 2006, but in 2006, we had an additional elementary school open, and we weren't closing enrollment in our existing schools, so that's concerning.
Additional questions? Counselor Willis, I know that you're on the phone. Do you have questions for the staff presenter at this point?
No, I think Counselor Corr got me covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let... If there... I'll go to the next place, which is the applicant. Mr... Hold on. Mr., hold on. Mr. Gould is here. If he wishes to say anything, do you wish to say anything? Or, because you have the option if you do or not. Sure, please do.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Chuck Good. My address is P.O. Box 67, Silverton, 97381. And I'm also the president of Valpak Development Corporation. My journey with this property started 20-some years ago and anticipating, anticipating that the city would, as close as we were to the thinner, we knew that, you know, eventually the city would just grow to us or around us, actually between Monmouth, start growing around us. We just continued to farm and raise cattle there until this point. And then, in 2008, I think Sean Irvine called me and asked me to participate in the Southwest Concept Plan. So, I served on that Citizens Advisory Committee for the whole duration of that, went to every single meeting. And we, as far as I'm aware, it was open to the public and they very much so desired input from all parties, including the police chief, which I know was there, whoever the current one was at the time. And I'm thinking the fire, but I'm not sure. Anyway, that was a very thorough process that we went through over a long period of time. And as, I'm not a citizen of Independence. In fact, I've never lived in any city, limits of any city, but I respect, you know, you people are here because you love your families and you love your community. And I never brought any agenda of my own to this process. I worked with Sean and the, a lot of you I don't recognize, but the people that were there at the time and to see, you know, what they wanted, those people that live here, you know, what they wanted for Independence. So, that concept plan is, you know, mostly their input, you know, and I didn't, I didn't push any certain agenda. And I still really don't. You know, I'm still just going with the staff. They've been great to work with. You know, we've met the, you know, looked at the criteria that we were supposed to meet and we've just worked through that. And it's been a long, inexpensive process to get here tonight. And this, I also would like to introduce Gordon King. He's the project manager. And if there's any further questions that are more technical, I'd probably defer that to Gordon.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? Thank you. And I did want to let, let it be known that Mr. King did indicate he's here. If there's, needs to be questions, I have his card and so I just wanted, if we need to, he's here and he so checked. Are there others who wish to speak in favor at this point? Seeing no one stepping, I have a person who listed as neutral, Marlene Westfall, I think it is. Good evening and welcome to City Council.
Thank you for having me here. Actually, I'm a citizen of Monmouth and not Independence. And there are a few of us here tonight concerning this new subdivision. First of all, I'd like to read a little statement I made and then bring some more additional comments if I can. It is my concern that this proposed project would impact our existing subdivision on Madrona Street in several negative ways. The roads on the west side of Monmouth side are not, or on Monmouth side, are not designed as collector streets for a project the scope and the size of yours. Talmage and Madrona Streets already have a high volume of traffic and are not to provide, are not designed to provide a safe and orderly and efficient circulation of traffic into, through, and out of a new subdivision. The additional vehicles from a 70-plus acre subdivision would just be overwhelming to our neighborhood. It would make our existing development unsafe and lose livability. There is a lot of foot traffic, bicycle use, and a high school where kids go back and forth too. Also, on Madrona Street, as many of you know, there is a park and the park and the playground equipment are designed for young children. A high volume would even make it more unsafe for children going to and from school. I personally have no objection to the new housing development as long it is not impacting our subdivision in a negative way. Please be a good neighbor and don't impact our area with increased traffic. Do not allow an outlet to connect Talmage or Madrona or Olympic Streets. The problem I see is it'll end up a bypass for Monmouth Avenue. People are pretty quick to find out if there's an easier way to get around town. And as you know, traffic backs up from the light from the school way down Monmouth Street. And they will find it pretty easy to skirt around that, hit Madrona Street, and go all the way up to 99W. What we would suggest, what we'd like to see actually, and could build a couple more houses, is just build the houses with all the backs towards Talmage, so there would be no traffic that would come out onto Talmage Road. Or if that is not possible, make it a right turn only with some kind of a barrier, a curve, that they couldn't cross over onto Madrona Street on the Monmouth side. I understand that development comes and I'm not, I'm not, I understand that development, but I would like to see this develop in a way that is good for Independence, but not a detriment for the people that live in Monmouth and in this subdivision. So...
Thank you. Questions for the speaker?
Where is, where is Madrona on this map?
Somebody help her out there.
This road that goes up here.
Fred, you want to help us out here?
Yep. Got it.
I think, oh, okay, there. It's in the little hashtags on the left side.
This one right here?
Yeah.
Okay. My only, my only comment is, has there been any discussion with the Monmouth City Council regarding this?
Let's, let's hold, can you hold that question for a moment?
Yeah.
I have gone and talked to some of the people with the Monmouth City Council about this, and I haven't gotten anything back yet as to what they plan to do or don't plan to do. I asked if any of them would be in attendance here tonight to hear this and they weren't able to attend.
Additional questions? Thank you for taking the time to come over. I do appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there other people with neutrals? Okay. Are the people who are opposed to this? Anybody who is opposed to this? Okay. I don't see anybody stepping forward to oppose. The applicant has the opportunity, if you have anything else to say, if you'd like to say anything else this evening.
Gordon.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gordon King. I reside at 5166 Cobb Lane, Salem, Oregon. Just to respond to a couple of questions, one is about the wetland. So, it's really interesting when we do wetland studies because a typical developer wants the least amount of wetlands possible for economic reasons. And we, this one came out with a lot of wetlands. So, the way it worked in this development is this wetlands actually, we think, is a real addition to the property. It actually separated the property about halfway in between and we think we can actually maybe enhance that wetlands like some of the communities have. But part of the question you had was, who is the jurisdiction over the wetlands? And we actually had to state out a couple of times. And it's fun to watch their process because they actually use something like a little teaspoon and they dig about six or eight inches down and they can tell you every little bug, all kinds of types of soil they have. And so, in our wetlands, we actually proposed two different plans. One was because they found a piece of wetlands that was about eight feet long and about three feet wide. And so, you can't build over that. So, we actually will have to do some mitigation on that. But the process we went through and the feasibility we went through, which I've never gone through in about 35 years of doing this, because of the way Independence works, the MX zone that was proposed for this southwest crossing was so detailed that I think in the four meetings we had with the city, the first question I asked is, "Why don't you guys build it? Because you guys have planned everything." And I mean that in the nicest way. I mean, we have real concepts of what we think the city wants. We came out of this whole process with a clear idea of what the city is looking for in their new communities, which is really unquestionably, in the long run, an easier way to do this. So, our process really has been to not only separate the two processes, the one specifically being the annexation and the second trying to fit everything into that MX zone as City of Independence conceived it. So, my hands off to the city for taking the time and the effort to do it as thorough as you have done it, because it does leave a lot less question marks. I actually looked it up online. I could find that concept plan online. I'm sure anybody could. And you can see what the expectations should be for that community. I think there will be a lot of changes as we go on, Fred, with traffic patterns and I've been to the little park in Monmouth. It's a great little park. We've been up and down Madrona. We've had a lot of discussions with our traffic people. But this process is annexation before we can go to the next step. So, we really can't put a lot more effort into the next step of development until we know that we have a piece that we can develop. And, but in all of your packets, I hope you will get to share all of the effort we put in for the last year and a half to two years. I think that's all I've got unless you guys have some questions.
Some questions at this point? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. See Karen flagging me here.
There's some of the, mostly the questions.
Okay. Without objection, what I'm going to do is, there's a person who just wanted to ask some additional questions and it is a little bit out of our sequence, but if that's everybody's okay, so allow, allow that. Mr. Matteo, please. And yeah, I think you had some, some questions and I know staff will be prepared to answer some of those. Good evening, sir, and welcome to the council.
Joe Matteo, 17189 South Buckner Creek Road, Beaver Creek, Oregon. We own this over orchard and when they built Monmouth up, all the drain water got piped over to the orchard. So, we get the floods from it now. And I'm, my question is, how is this going to be mitigated with this property as it gets built? More concrete going in, the water's got to go someplace. That's my first one. The second one is, since this is coming up against the back of the orchard, how is it going to affect us farming it? The orchard itself?
Where is your orchard on this map, sir?
It's over the right foot, back down...
Come on up and just go ahead and point.
You can come, yes.
Yeah. Can you pull up the map?
This whole orchard right here.
Where was that?
All of this.
Right at the tail end.
Okay, Tom, there were...
Kind of the southwest corner.
I got to get my maps here again. Okay. Right behind you, Tom, on the wall.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, right now, we get all the, we get a lot of drain water from Monmouth comes into that orchard now. And what's going to happen to prevent the water from this piece of property coming over?
Okay. Good, good question. Thank you. I do appreciate you taking the time to bring that up and I'm hoping that staff will provide some guidance here or at least some response. And I'll, when you come up, I'll let you... Does anybody else have anything else to say at this point? Okay, what I'm going to do is, we're going to go to the city staff summary and response public testimony. So, yeah.
All right.
And then, counselor, we'll have time for questions of staff here.
Can you pull up that PowerPoint that we just had up? So, again, let me just flip through it. Again, we understand the, the impact of traffic and really, I mean, when you look at this plan and what it's calling for right here, it is calling for a significant amount of connections through, to connect this with, with the larger community. Part of the reason why the concern right here for Madrona, I mean, why it makes sense right now is because some of these other connections are not in. But you can see that this plan itself called for connecting this into the larger system. And so, again, the reason that we're trying to do that is because we want to achieve this rather than this. If we cut off certain connections, then all of a sudden, traffic goes one direction to one point and that's when we really have some traffic issues. If we can provide alternatives, that's what we're trying to achieve. That's what the Southwest Area Plan in 2012 was trying to achieve. As for the drainage, the Southwest Area Plan, I don't have image of it here. It called for retaining natural drainage through the project site and establishing things like drainage corridors through the site, stormwater swales and whatnot. It called for all of that through the site. Now, in this area, there are swales that go through here that this plan called for retaining and then actually putting pedestrian features next to. There was two of them on this side of the site. One is about right here, one is about right here-ish. So, the Southwest Area Plan did envision that. I will also say that as we're getting deeper into various approvals, when we're looking at, when we're going through this engineering, we will consider stormwater. We do have to make sure that things drain appropriately, that people are not going to get flooded or we're not going to flood somebody else. So, again, that's later on within, into the project thing. The reason, I should just say, why, why is it like this? Why do we get more detail as we come here? Well, as we get more and more detail, we become more and more sure that development is possible. And then, developers actually feel a little more comfortable shelling out significant money for things like engineering, right? Does that make sense? So, as, that's sort of what Gordon was saying, as he was saying, we can't get into that additional detail unless we're sure that we actually have a project we can move forward with. So...
Before you leave, I think we have some questions. Are there other questions? I don't want to... I have a question too. There was a question about our interaction with our sister city. And wanted to follow up on that. Has there been recent conversations regarding this with our, with our neighbors to the west?
I personally have not had conversations about it. Tom, do you?
You know, I haven't and certainly, you know, this is not a surprise. They've been tracking this UGV process and participated in that as well as in the concept plan. But I definitely think, you know, in the future, we can do a much better job of reaching out to them and making sure that we have their comments, that they know this is coming. If they had significant concerns, I met with their city manager today and he didn't bring it up. They're in a city manager today. So, they, they know it's out there. Suzanne knows this is out there and if they had concerns, we know they would bring it to you. But I think we can definitely do a better job of making sure we collaborate with all of our partners.
I know there were extensive reach-outs in past administrations and, yeah... I, I know there were extensive reach outs in past administrations, and yeah, it, it's not for a lack of extending the hand here.
And, and def, I mean, definitely they're aware that that's our urban growth boundary.
Very much so. So what we're, to just reaffirm something, and I want to make sure I'm absolutely clear. So what we're approving, what, what we're being asked to approve is annexing and bringing that land into the city and to setting what that zone would be, which is the MX zone. And then frankly, everything else is down the road. As in, while you've given us a concept plan, you guys could, folks could get back together and scribble all sorts of different ways, and it, and that would go through site design review and planning commission and all the other kinds of things. So, so the big question is, do we bring the dirt in and under what zone? And then everything else is, is figureable. And so some of these other concerns, which I know everybody's heard, could, could be addressed at that point in time. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Additional questions from the speaker at this point? Okay. Without objection. Okay, without, with there being no further testimony for the council tonight, okay, I'm going to close the hearing. I have more things to read. Pursuant to ORS 1977636E, the applicant has the right to submit final written arguments that will be included in the record. The submission must be made within seven days and may not contain new evidence. The submission must only contain written argument. If the submissions contains any new evidence, the new evidence will be rejected, and the council will only consider the written argument. The applicant also has the right to waive the submission of final written argument. If the applicant does not waive the submission of final written argument, the council will not be able to make a final determination of the application tonight. Does the applicant wish to waive the submission of the final written argument? Okay. He let the record show he's willing to waive the submission of the final wait, written argument. The applicant waives the right, so the council may discuss and deliberate on the matter. So now, we can have discussion, and only the, you know, if we have questions, we can ask questions of anybody we want, and then the council determine whether to make a decision immediately or at a later date. And then if the decision is made immediately, move to the second and adopt the findings, the decision, any conditions of approval, and we move forward from that. Did I do that okay, Karen? Covered all? Good. Just have to do the right paperwork. Okay, so we're in discussion. What do you think? Comments?
Well, I'll make a comment.
Please do.
I believe I was, I believe it was on the planning commission when we went through the urban growth boundary expansion discussion. And the one thing I remember very clearly is, this area was basically the only place we could expand, because we've got the river on the west, airport, we've got flood plains northwest, we've got Monmouth on, on the west. So anyway, this is the place where we're going to have to expand. So I'm, I'm very confident that the staff has heard that there's some concerns about traffic, and, and that's something I know they'll be looking at very carefully, so.
I recently bought a home and a new development here in Independence, and I have to say I'm very pleased with the way that it was planned. Seems to make a lot of common sense. I think the city's got the right, got the heart in the right place and going to do the right thing. But that said, I would encourage the people who are involved and interested to stay involved and interested throughout the process and, and make their voices heard.
Comment? Councillor Martin Willis on the phone. Do you have any comments to make?
I do not. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
She's at home practicing being sick. Councillor Ransome Smith, anything to ask? You're good? Okay. I'm going to just keep us going. So I'm going to take it that there's no more questions or anything, but I think we can make a decision. Is that, is there anybody objecting to that?
No.
Okay. So we have, let me get to the right page here. I'm flipping through. Somebody tell me where I'm going here. I've got things flipped. Oh, there we go, on page 25. There is a suggested motion. If someone would so move.
I move to approve AX 2001-01, adopting findings and conditions of approval submitted in the staff report and to direct staff to prepare an ordinance declaring the property annexed to the City of Independence.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And I have a second. Is there discussion? Any discussion? I hear no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. We have another item of business tonight. Mr. Pesamir.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So before you, are actually two resolutions, which we prepared between the last council meeting and this one. These resolutions were requested by council to, to be brought back. Just as a little history, we had, we're moving forward with looking at the potential sale of some properties on Polk Street. And as we were finishing, or going through our due diligence and the recommendation of Councillor Ransome Smith, we redoubled our efforts and discovered that there was an agreement between the City of Independence and Boise Cascade, which was entered into 2008, which basically said that the property was unsuitable for residential and commercial construction and should be used as a park and open space. So I've actually prepared one staff memo for two resolutions. Both of these resolutions were, my understanding what council wanted to see is spring back. I'm not going to go through the details here, but I will say that our city attorney is really probably fine with the resolution terminating the resolutions 2000, or 19, excuse me, 19-15-14 and Resolution 19-15-15. However, she did express some concerns about the second resolution, Resolution 19-15-18, just because she wants to point out that it's not a great practice for a city council to tie a future city council's hands. However, in this particular case, I heard a pretty strong voice from this council that said that they wanted to bring something back so that there weren't potential problems in the future where we might offer this up for sale. And again, and we wanted to make sure that it could be put in the hands of the Parks Board to figure out what they wanted to do with this. So I just wanted to make that clear, since our city attorney commented on that. I think if, if she had her preference, Resolution 19-15-18 probably would either be modified to be toned down or to not be adopted, just because it sets the precedence of tying a future council's hands. But with that said, our recommendation from staff, based on what we've heard and just the experience we went through, is that you adopt both resolutions as presented.
Questions for the city manager?
So if we were, what's the process once, if we signify that land for parks, would that then go back to, would there be some sort of modified, we've modified the Parks master plan in some way, update it, some way to reflect that? And does that go to the Parks Commission, or how, how's that work?
I, I think that's, that would be a question for the Parks Commission, that we basically would take it back to them and say, you know, do we want to, is it worth doing, you know, an update to the master plan now, or should we include this in the next master plan update? Given this small thing, it probably, would probably be in the next master plan update. But that doesn't preclude us at any point in time of talking about what we'd want to happen there, or putting it in the capital improvement plan, or doing other things that we would need to do to develop that. That would be something that the Parks Board could do independently of actually going through the full master plan change.
Would, would, would our lawyer be happier if we took it to the, the Parks Commission first?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the Park. Well, I don't think so. I think what the lawyer is basically saying is, you're basically saying this is going to be open space forever, and, and, and you're, you're including a future council for maybe potentially doing something different there.
Doesn't the, doesn't the agreement with Boise Cascade already, right, didn't that already kind of do that?
Yes, but as our lawyer, our attorney would note is, the agreement was put in place and then was immediately superseded by the D transfer. The D transfer didn't mention that, which basically took that agreement and, okay, no, well, okay. However, it was a commitment that the city made at that point, so.
I think we should do it. Any objection? Somebody make a motion? Let's do this.
I move to adopt Resolution number 19-1517 and Resolution repealing Resolutions number 19-1514 and 19-1515, declaring real property to be surplus.
I have a motion.
A second.
Second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you want to make the, do you want to make the motion on Resolution 191518, Kathy?
Sure.
So, so I heard that that was a motion on the number that I, I just read?
Second.
Yes, please, thank you.
And there's a second? A resolution declaring Polk Street real property is open space. I have a motion, a second. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Yay team. Great. Thank you, folks, unless there's any announcements?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Kat. Was that an aye for?
It was.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that. Have a pleasant evening. Let's go have dinner.